Today has L.A. city leaders celebrating with the apparel company its 15th year headquartered in downtown Los Angeles.
We have so many old buildings in L.A. as well, and they've adaptively reused this building to continue to provide jobs in the 21st century.
But American Apparel didn't obtain its success by cutting employee wages and benefits. In fact, it's a company that's committed to fair wages and low-cost health benefits for its workers. There are even on-site medical clinics.
Anyone that comes in to see the clinic on-site, their copayment is waived. In addition, our healthcare plan offers benefits for hospitalization, doctor visits. There is no copayment if you're hospitalized.
It was places like American Apparel, it is companies like American Apparel who have a consciousness for who their workers are, to ensure they have safe working conditions, to ensure they have health benefits, to ensure they have a livable wage that has allowed young immigrants in this country to go on, pursue, and be part of the American dream.
A company with a conscience, just the kind of company the City of Angels is proud to count among the many businesses that call L.A. home. While American Apparel has been in the city for 15 years, several new businesses are just moving in, and a popular street for this business boom has been Broadway Avenue downtown. Anna Marcos takes us to the grand opening of two of many new restaurants which promise to become local favorites.
Two, one. Yeah!
Want a free party? There's plenty of ribbon-cutting parties to crash up and down Broadway Avenue in downtown L.A. as more and more new eateries open up shop. It's all part of Councilmember Jose Weezaar's 10-year plan to revitalize Broadway. New restaurants, bars, shops, and soon even a future hotel are moving into the historic buildings.
Many of you know that this was once the heart of the city. This is where everyone came to do their shopping, to get entertainment, and we are now bringing it back to its glory past. We are building a community, we are supporting business and jobs, and we're getting back Broadway to its beautiful historic past.
Among the newest kids on the block, the L.A. Brewing Company and Umami Katusin, a branch of the now-famous Umami Burger chain. Six different umami kitchens under one roof will prepare everything from the popular umami burger to deli and pork specialties. There's even a full donut menu, as well as specialty drinks, cocktails, and coffees.
This is Broadway. This is the heart of downtown. We're in the middle of everywhere.
The L.A. Brewing Company is not to be outdone. It's got 100 beers on tap and everything from burgers and sliders to Kansas City New York steak.
They are already a local favorite. It's become one of my local favorites, by the way, and it has increased activity on the street both day and night, like I mentioned, which is good for Broadway, it's good for downtown, and it's good for the city of Los Angeles.
We are a very strong community here. We have a lot of pride, and we've been pushing to create a downtown after 5:00 P.M. And it's establishments like this that get us really excited.
I'm very excited to try out the beers and the food, so we'll have to see. I don't know, I might be a regular here.
And in a couple of years, you'll be able to go bar hopping and window shopping in style when the olden-day streetcar returns to Broadway Avenue in 2014. Get in line, it could be standing room only. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Two Boots Pizza has also moved to the block. Tarina Tarantino, a world-famous jewelry designer, plans to move her headquarters to Broadway in the fall, and the Ross Dress for Less department store just bought a building on Broadway. The city is once again celebrating its diversity and the diversity of its Asian-American community by honoring three individuals who are giving back and making a difference. Rich Samuels introduces us to the honorees.
Led by a cross-cultural dance group, the mayor accompanied this year's honorees into council chambers.
This history is the history of triumph, the triumph of openness and opportunity over bigotry and bias. During this month, we recognize how far we've truly come.
K.W. Lee received the Spirit of Los Angeles Award. Born in what is now known as North Korea, he arrived in the United States as a young man. He's a socially-conscious investigative journalist with a career stretching back over a half-century.
It is important that today's generation in a digital world desperately need and deserves their own history of their own people.
Attorney Jothi Nanda received the Dream of Los Angeles Award. She is an educator in public interest law focusing on such issues as social justice, civil rights, and juvenile justice.
I think it's important for the generations and the kids to see that just because you came from a different place doesn't mean that you can't contribute from your background in meaningful ways, and that it's really a celebration of different cultures, which really, after all, is Los Angeles.
The Hope of Los Angeles Award was presented to Michelle Kwan, the most decorated figure skater in U.S. history. Off the ice, she's been active in leadership training, the President's Council on Fitness, Sports, and Nutrition, and recently received a master's degree in international relations at Tufts University.
It's an honor to be here, celebrating Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and to be receiving the Hope Award of Los Angeles. My parents immigrated to the United States in the early '20s, and they came here with one thing, and that's hope.
The City Hall celebration was just the beginning. There are special Heritage Month programs happening throughout the city. This is Rich Samuels for L.A. this week.
And a trailblazer and activist in the Japanese-American community receives recognition as well. Brush clearance season is here, and a local high school placed a second in a national competition. These stories and more in City Beat. Councilmember Richard Alarcon honored Rose Ochi in city council chambers for being a trailblazer for the Japanese-American community. At three years old, Ochi was relocated to an internment camp in Arkansas during World War II. She grew up to become a lawyer and a champion for the poor, serving the city of Los Angeles and then the country.
In 1993, Rose left the city of Los Angeles to work for the Clinton administration, and she eventually became the first Asian-American woman to ever serve at the Assistant Attorney General level.
The rewards are there in the work, whether it was in the White House or at the Department of Justice. Everything I learned that permitted me to be successful, I learned here in City Hall.
Ochi has also been at the forefront of the fight for redress and reparations for those who were interned during World War II. She's most currently the founding director of the California Forensic Science Institute at the L.A. Regional Crime Laboratory. Up, up, and away, Councilman Dennis Zine and members of the West Hills Neighborhood Council got a lift up to the top of a light pole in West Hills where they unveiled one of five new decorative community signs for West Hills. Included in the community medallion design are iconic symbols of the San Fernando Valley experience, such as the mountains, orange groves, and mission-style architecture.
This is important to us because we've worked a long time for it, almost 10 years, to get these signs designed, manufactured, and put up on the streets of West Hills.
Despite obstacles, the sign can now finally be seen at various entry points into West Hills. North Hollywood High School wins second place at the 22nd Annual U.S. Department of Energy National Science Bowl Competition in Washington, D.C. You're looking at footage from their L.A. Department of Water and Power Science Bowl win back in February. After two days of intense competition, Lexington High School from Massachusetts took first place, with North Hollywood taking second place. LADWP general manager Ron Nichols praised the team for representing our city and LADWP well. If your home is among those identified within the very-high-fire-hazard severity zones, the Los Angeles Fire Department is reminding you to clear the brush to comply with brush clearance requirements. The LAFD began inspecting homes on May 1st. If they find that a property is out of compliance, the property owner could receive a citation. For details on what the brush clearance requirements are, go to lafd.org. Thanks to a group of community leaders and students, the city of Pacoima will now have a new park to enjoy this fall. Rasha Goel reports.
The Pacoima community recently celebrated the groundbreaking of the new Fox and Laurel Canyon Park, a new park and garden that will be located at the corner of Fox Street and Laurel Canyon Boulevard across from San Fernando High School.
This is going to be a wonderful place for learning, for being at peace with the world, for understanding, for improving our community.
It's a project, officials say, that received a great push from San Fernando High School students.
The school has a reputation of having gangsters and much violence. The families are going to come together, and it's just like a lot of friendships are going to be involved here, rather than having fights and everything, and making just the community look nicer.
This plot will be transformed into an area that contains two playgrounds, a picnic area, a walking path, a performance area, and a six-bed community garden.
We're going to have gardens to teach kids, the science club kids, and a lot of the kids at San Fernando High School, how to grow organically.
I'd like for my students to come here on a weekly basis, you know, to learn lessons, to practice what we preach.
With the help of the nonprofit organization, Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust, this park is among 20 parks being built throughout the city.
This is an investment now in you, the community. This is not one park, this is going to be a ring of parks throughout the city. You kids, you're part of history.
Councilmember Richard Alarcon also proposed changing the name of the park to Tiger Park in honor of San Fernando High School's mascot. The park is anticipated to open in August later this year. From Pacoima, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Plans also include installing a new sidewalk, two streetlights, and a solar-powered light at the bus stop. And a local park was where some students from the city's after-school enrichment program went for a recent field trip. It was there that the program's young participants spent a Saturday having fun and learning all about teamwork.
We've got fun events like obstacle course, we've got fun events like Simon Says, we've got water balloon toss.
100 kids from three L.A. Unified Schools spent a Saturday playing games and making friends at Cheviot Hills Park, their chaperones, L.A.'s Best Friends, the young professionals who fundraise on behalf of the L.A.'s Best After-School Enrichment Program.
It's just an interesting opportunity for them to kind of get out of school and out of their neighborhoods and get out into the park for a day and kind of interact with some people who are a little bit older than them and maybe from different parts of the city than they're from.
At the special L.A.'s Best outing at the park, kids received gift bags, played games like relay races and obstacle courses where teamwork was the name of the game, and ate lunch catered by Fat Burger. But on a normal weekday, kids say they have fun as well when they attend the L.A.'s Best program after school.
We do homework, have snack, and play a little bit.
And at L.A.'s Best, kids also learn life lessons.
To be safe, respectful, and be responsible.
L.A.'s Best is a fun place and a good place to be safe.
Parents say they're grateful to the program on many levels.
L.A.'s Best is great. It's the best thing, you know, that happened to me. I really appreciate it because they do help me a lot, you know, the after-school, I don't have to pay somebody, and it's great. They help him with the homework, they helped my son a lot because he wasn't reading, and they've helped him a lot.
From the classroom to the playground, it's a program that's ensuring kids not only get exposed to books, but to the world around them. L.A.'s Best serves 28,000 kids. And in this week's list of things to do, a children's film festival downtown, a classic car show in the valley, and helping the less fortunate right from your doorstep. You still have time to catch the annual Red Cat International Children's Film Festival on its last weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, May 12th and 13th. Red Cat stands for Roy and Edna Disney Cowlarts Theater. It's located downtown at 631 West Second Street. The festival, featuring animated as well as live-action fare for moviegoers of all ages, showcases work from around the globe, including Brazil, Colombia, Iran, and Taiwan. For a list of movies playing at the festival, go to redcat.org. And check out the hot rods, motorcycles, race cars, classics, and other rare and beautiful vehicles at the Shepherd of the Hills Car Show on Saturday, May 12th, in Porter Ranch from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The event is a fundraiser to support a project to build water wells in a village in Africa. There will also be live music, food trucks, and lots of fun activities. The Shepherd of the Hills Church is located at 1-9700 Rinaldi Street, Porter Ranch. Admission is free. Email carshow@theshepherd.org for details. Feeling like doing some good? Join your letter carriers in stamping out hunger by leaving non-perishable food items outside by your mailbox on Saturday, May 12th. Your postal service letter carrier will collect them and deliver them to local food banks as part of the National Association of Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger National Food Drive. Detailed information can be found at healthstampouthunger.com. Councilmember Mitchell Englander's office is also helping in the effort by asking those in his district interested in helping local families to email melody.jeremelo@licity.org. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do. The music of Mexico took center stage at a big celebration in Boyle Heights. No, we're not talking about Cinco de Mayo. Anita Bennett takes us to the mariachi festival.
It was a day of music and fun at the 21st Annual Mariachi Festival held at Mariachi Plaza in Boyle Heights.
It's a great way to spend the Sunday afternoon with the family and enjoy the music, and now that we have the Boyle Heights Farmers Market here, they're coming out, and we've integrated both together, so it's a beautiful day for mariachi.
The event drew rave reviews from area residents.
Boyle Heights is a community of a lot of, you know, Mexican families, Mexican first-generation and newly-immigrated families, so just incorporating the culture and incorporating the love that a lot of us have for the mariachi music, I think is just an awesome thing.
While some people enjoyed the music from their seats, others decided to get up and For the little ones, there was even a gifting booth.
What we're doing is we're giving away free books to all children, and in return, all we're asking for them is to color a book of blue, which is our character behind me, for City National Bank, and we really invest in the communities and really believe in doing that.
In all, about a half dozen bands took the stage for this year's festival. I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week.
The mariachi festival was sponsored by the city's Department of Cultural Affairs, the MTA, and Council District 14. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at ellicityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. It's Tuesday, March 8th. This is your Los Angeles City Council that meets on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. All of our meetings are open to the public, even our committee hearings. With that said, Madam Clerk, Colerone.
Alarcon, Busque, and O'Carden is Englander, Gercetti, Weezaar, Caress, Corcoran, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Weston, Timmer is present, and Accor, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Labange seconds. Next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves, Mr. Weezaar seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
If everyone could please rise, we'll be led in the flag salute by Ms. Perry. If everyone could please rise, we'll be led in the flag salute by Ms. Perry.
Please put your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Madam Clerk, at this time, let's begin going through the first section of our agenda.
Items 1 through 20 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials, members?
President, can you hold item number 6 on the desk, please?
Mr. Garcetti.
Number 2, please.
Any other specials, members? Then on this item, on these items, let's prepare to vote, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next section of our agenda?
Items 21 through 26 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection. Specials, members. What about cards?
Cards on items 22, 23, 24, 25.
Okay, on the remaining items, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next.
On the supplemental agenda, items 27 and 28 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Zion, 28. Any up, Mr. Weezer?
28 for corrects, did you?
28, taken care of. On the remaining item there, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next.
And for the record, that ordinance will be held over for one week unless reconsidered later today.
Thank you for that information.
Item 29 is an item for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection. Mr. Labange.
All of it special.
29, Mr. Tom Labange. Next.
Mr. President, that takes counsel to public comment. Items called special or the special meeting.
President, if we could call number 1 special, we voted on that already, if we could redo the vote on that and call that special, please. It's an appointment for a commissioner.
Okay, let's re- can open the roll for reconsideration on item 1. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Mr. Englander.
9 and 14 forthwith, please, thank you.
Without objection. So, Ms. Perry, it's my understanding you have a presentation?
Okay, come on up, PAB gardeners, and wear your gloves, and downtown center, come on. Yeah, everybody come on up. Thank you. Come up close.
I'll forget your phone.
Come on, come on. I'm not afraid of you.
I'll stand right behind you.
Oh, good, yeah, actually, stand right there, and then every time I move, you move with me, so that's good. You'd be really, really great. So, I have some interesting folks here, and they've been working on an interesting project. These are the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council members and community volunteers. Greg Fisher, Cheryl McDonald, Valerie Watson, Ryuko Ozawa, General Jeff, Gabrielle Garcia, Patty Berman, Cheryl Younger, Alan Harris, Stephen Dornbusch, Antonio Lopez. Did I miss anybody? Did I get everybody? Okay. And the Fashion District VID, Jackie Sanchez, Elmar Pacheco, Randall Tampa, from the City of Los Angeles Office of Community Beautification, Thomas Corales, and I think Tom Brennan, maybe here, from LAPD? Yes, right there, right there. Okay, okay, there you go. Thanks. All right, if I missed anyone, did I get everybody? Okay, good. I want to thank everyone here behind me, who, for the last year, have volunteered the first Saturday of each month, and this is kind of an amazing thing to see, to weed, to prune plants, to pick up trash around the lawn of the Police Administration Building, or PAB, across the street from City Hall, and in front of the Higgins Building. During a time when the city had difficulty finding the financial resources necessary to keep up with the landscape maintenance, these folks behind us stepped up, gave freely of their time to make their own neighborhood and their city a nicer place to live. And while numerous community stakeholders had a hand in cleaning the site, a few individuals and organizations deserve particular praise. Valerie Watson, Cheryl McDonald, and Ryuko Ozawa organized the cleanups, the recruiting of the volunteers, and coordinated with the city and the Business Improvement Districts to ensure successful events. The Fashion District VID hauled away the site debris and provided the support. And the Downtown Center Business Improvement District helped with sidewalk cleaners and also provided support staff. And I recognize he's not here, but I want to say a few good words about Hal Bastian, who continues to be on a personal crusade to replace the doggy bags in the dispensers funded by the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. And I also want to thank my staff, both former and Greg Fisher and current. One small story about Mr. Fisher is when they were cleaning, working on the garden one morning, and I looked from the second floor of the Higgins Building, and he was so resourceful that he had taken in his extension cord and taken it across four lanes of traffic and plugged it into the Higgins Building so that they could shear the plants, and all I could do was pray, that there was no water on the street, and that it seemed to have worked out. And thank you to Stephanie, yeah, give him a clap for that one, he's still here. And Stephanie Magnin for picking up where Mr. Fisher left off and just seeing this project through where we are today. Now, your efforts are a shining example about uniting behind a common cause. I'm also pleased to say that the city has found funding to have Recreation and Parks perform maintenance at PAB. So, maybe we'll be able to give you guys a little bit of a break. In addition to assisting with the day-to-day landscaping, this group of volunteers, and Ms. Watson in particular, brought attention to a serious landscaping issue. Our trees had been sinking into the ground. And in response to her diligence, the city staff discovered that our contractor used an incorrect soil mix, and so, starting later this month, the contract work to repair this damage will be at no additional cost to the taxpayer. Thank you to all of you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your diligence. So, without the attentiveness, the civic engagement of these volunteers, this problem would have gone unaddressed until it was too late to save our brand-new trees. So, I want to thank all of you for giving so willingly of your time and your effort to maintain the PAB lawn and to take pride in your community. And now, I'd like to ask Valerie, Cheryl, and Ryuko to come forward and just say a few quick words.
Hi, I'm Valerie Watson. I'm on the board of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council, and I just wanted to say that this is a testament to how much downtown residents and the people who work and do business here really cherish our open spaces. We really want to see public open space come to downtown and for it to be really an integral part of civic life and public life. So, I just wanted to say real quick thanks to everyone that has put in just elbow grease and gotten their hands dirty in the ground to help us keep this space wonderful for everyone, and, yeah, I'm just really proud of everyone today. This is really great. Thanks.
I'm Cheryl McDonald, and I'm a resident of the Higgins Building, where I've lived for almost nine years. And so, I've watched this space, this block, move from being the old Caltrans building to a beautiful new police headquarters with a park that we had all been looking forward to. It was sad to see that we were not able to maintain it, and I, too, am really proud of the neighbors who stepped forth and made sure that the green space that so many of us enjoyed stayed beautiful. It's a thrill to be able to come and watch the dogs play, and I thank you for picking up the ball. Thank you.
And everything else.
Hi, my name is Ryuko Ozawa. I just really love gardening, and I've always gardened since I was little, so, of course, when Valerie put out the calls for volunteers, I joined immediately. And, you know, I love the downtown community, so that's why I'm involved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. We're going to go in the back and enjoy the service.
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you for all that you do. Madam Clerk, have all the ordinances been called special, or?
No, item 27 was voted on. It can be reconsidered at this time.
Are there any cards?
Public hearing has been held in that item.
Okay, on that item, then, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, thank you.
And now that item's before council, Mr. President, you can vote on the item itself now.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, we're going to go to the Valley. Donna Pierman, Herbert Thompson, followed by Sharon Brewer. Good morning.
Good morning, but I'm not very happy. How could you even think of closing the Van Nuys site over in the paper they're talking about? And yesterday, from the, they were talking about, from your budget, Budget Committee, talked about closing the Van Nuys site. Councilman Garcetti, I want to talk to you. I heard that you are so proud of having the Van Nuys in San Pedro's site, and it made us feel that you cared about the Valley, the whole city council. This shows the council real feelings about the Valley. The council already overspent on everything that it does, and how much does it cost to do those presentations on Tuesdays and Wednesdays? This is the wrong thing to do, the close of Van Nuys site. There's people over here that it's almost impossible to go over to the downtown site, and this was a way for people who don't drive, where it takes two hours to get over to the downtown site to be able to speak. You're trying to make it almost impossible for us to, for to speak. In the meantime, you don't, had no problems about overspending on, when giving all this money to the CRA as it did in the past. So, certainly, you didn't care about money, otherwise, you wouldn't have allocated a lot of money over to the CRA when you did. And on your projects, you spent a lot of money on your different projects, and you certainly don't care about us when you let the DWP rates hike. So, what we got to do is we got to keep the site over here in Van Nuys. There is, I think that if they only encourage people to come to Van Nuys, we can get a lot more people over here instead of just automatically closing it, I think with a very little amount of money, that you can encourage a lot more people, and then, it will be a worthwhile project to have over here, have the site in Van Nuys. So, please, don't get rid of Van Nuys, and 13, vote for 13.
Mr. Thompson, are you there?
Good morning, Mr. President, L.A. City Council Board members. Today, I'm just here to make announcement, on June 16th, 2012, at Delano Park, we're going to have a sock hop, where we're inviting the public, we're going to, where we're going to have lots of fun, lots of food. It's hosted by PCYCC Victim Rights Assistance Program. We honoring a pioneer by the name of Monica Benavilla, who's here, that she has proposals here before the park, was even the park, got pitches before and pitches after. We're just inviting the public to come out and to join us. Thank you.
Next, Sharon Brewer.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Daily News article, "Council May End Remote Valley Hookup," page A3, Daily News. The city council's Budget and Finance Committee took first steps Monday towards pulling the plug on remote public testimonies from Van Nuys in San Pedro to save money. Committee voted to cancel $21,000 allocation for equipment and personnel. CD12 was quoted stating, "At a time when we are looking to cut critical jobs, this money we can use for other purposes." The CAO memo 132 states that this cost is based on a contract rate of $19 per hour for four hours a day times 138 council meetings annually. You're talking about, for Van Nuys, $10,488 annually. I want to request a breakdown, a report back, of what it costs for the city council to meet in downtown City Hall, complete with ITA, the city clerk, and everybody else that's there, before you start looking at cutting us here. It's unfair for you to go and start late and not look, take and look at your own house. And if you want to take a look at cutting stuff, how about 121 garage, GSD, home garaged cars? Eighty-one of those are council districts. Why do you need all that? Those cars, cars on there. So, basically, we, the public, need to know what the total cost is for city council to be run down at City Hall before you go and take our only way of going and making public comment. It is not fair to be going and picking on us. And again, San Pedro, fine, Van Nuys, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruben Ben Zazon in the Valley. Ruben in the Valley.
He walked away.
Thank you, Ms. Pierman. Mr. Herman, followed by David Bell, followed by Arminet Norjanian. Mr. Norjanian, I don't see you at the end of the line. Mr. Herman, good morning.
Good morning, council members. As we sit here and we look in the background, we know that we have laborers here, but it says here that to build L.A., we all are facing economic indicators that can continue to show slow or steady growth. Is that so? Well, in the week, it reports, Mr. Weezer, that the U.S. jobs market appears to be slowing its stride, raising fears that this week, that a nascent economic recovery is losing momentum. Los Angeles, we are losing. We continue to mismanage, abuse taxpayers' fundings, and the city has no outlet but other than to spiral down. So, on another fact, on public comment now, I, Mr. Herman, an advocate of Boyle Heights, representing CD14 and every Angeleno in the city of Los Angeles, I say to you, we in our committee have not had a public comment or a town meeting. I've asked my councilmen, which I will not point my finger to, and I've asked his staff for two years now, that our committee demands at this point today, a town meeting. We want you to face us and say to us that our economy is doing very well, that there is growth for that one Walgreen on Caesar Chavez Avenue. For a man who labored in the farms, one Walgreen on Caesar Chavez. No, I want to see growth, and that growth is opportunity for every Angeleno who wishes to open up a new business, establish residency in Boyle Heights, El Sereno, Lincoln Heights, come to our town meeting that I am saying today, on behalf of every Angeleno who wishes to participate. Mr. Weezer, please, have a town meeting. I challenge that town meeting so we may debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, sir.
Council members. My name's David Bell. I'm the president of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council, and I've been asked by a few of my stakeholders to come down and make a public comment today on the Hollywood Community Plan that's being proposed. I went a couple weeks ago to the Plum Committee, but we didn't get a chance to speak, so I was asked to come to city council and make public comment. Each East Hollywood Neighborhood Council has opposed the plan every step of the way, specifically the, the parts of the plan that increase density along freeways and along historic areas in East Hollywood. Generally, the plan is not a plan that addresses the needs of the community as I see it. When I talk to my stakeholders in East Hollywood, they're concerned about traffic, crime, parking, open space, the lack of parks. There really are no parks in East Hollywood at all, air quality, education, and there are really no action items in this plan, other than basically what amounts to lip service as we want more parks, we want more open space. All of the action items seem to be directed towards green lighting development in our area. And basically, the plan is based upon outdated census data, which is no longer true. And what it does, I believe, by, by creating a by right project for all the projects that are even gonna, gonna go up in Hollywood, it takes the community away from the, from a seat at the table. And what we have here is a development plan instead of a true community plan, and we essentially are not able to come in and trust the developers, who have a bad track record in our neighborhood, to come in and give us the things that we need in our neighborhood: parks, safety, quality of life, walkability, livability, a good education, and a place for people to grow up and live and raise their kids. And we just don't believe that this plan addresses those concerns on behalf of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norjanian, followed by Samantha Gibbs, followed by Ann, I think it's Oledger. If I could see you come, get behind Mr. Norjanian. Yes.
Yeah. Good morning, city council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. My name is Arminak Norjan, and I'm actually liberal Democrat and human rights advocate. I run for a seat of California State Assembly from South Central Los Angeles, so-called 59th District. I promise to raise taxes 50% against wealthy individuals and rich oil-producing manufacturers and gasoline-making corporations in order to remedy state budget deficit, in order to keep social programs running, and to, and to increase social spending. I also promise to create California State Satellite Cellar Phone Service for rural forested areas, territorial waters, or California shores, where actually regulars, cell, private cell phone networks fail. I will also provide six-month free pregnancy leave to all Californian women at the expense of state government. And, and actually, I also promise to make same-sex marriage law of the land to uphold civil rights of sexual minorities. As 56% of Californian voters rejected Proposition 19 last year, legalization of marijuana was being rejected. I will craft a legislation to close down so-called medical marijuana dispensaries, shops, where trip over clients, and charge gross sums of money to substance abusers. Actually, I would ask city council members to adopt a resolution where would ban, where would ban those so-called medical marijuana dispensaries in order to stop substance abuse in the city of Los Angeles, to which city government contributed greatly by its illegal City Ordinance 181530. The slogan of American Revolution is "Owes Corrupt Officials." I propose that you, city council member, cut down your egregious wages of $178,000.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Gibbs, followed by Ms. Oledger.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Samantha Gibbs, and I'm the Assistant Organizing Director with the CalPerg Student Chapters here in Southern California. So I work with UCLA and the USC Student Chapters, as well as some of our field interns on college campuses. And we reach out to and also are accountable to over 10,000 students who are on our newsletter mailing list. And we have over 4,000 paying student members, and this year I've worked with over 200 active young organizers who've been working to protect the ocean by banning plastic bags. So we know that there have been a lot of corporate plastic bag lobbyists walking around city hall in the past few weeks, as well as a lot of advertisements on the radio and on the TV from the plastics industry that are trying to manipulate Angelinos. One of the ads I just saw last weekend was in the L.A. Times, placed prominently amidst the 14 pictures of the flamboyant hats from the Kentucky Derby. It was kind of astonishing to see that. Obviously, that ad must have cost a lot of money, and coming from an organizing perspective with students, we don't have a lot of funds to be able to place ads and things like that, but I, I know that we do have the power in voices and people, and we've delivered some of that to already in petitions, and then also some phone calls last week. And we'll continue to let you know that there's a lot of support for that going on this week. But I, I know about the motion from Councilmember Labange on Friday, seconded by Busciano, which seemed to question why we even need a ban. So we wanted to come today to remind you that over two dozen cities in California and the same number of countries have already banned plastic bags, and we're frankly behind the times here in Los Angeles. Plastic bags are environmental and a public health hazard, and there's tons of public support out there. So President Weston, we would like to respectfully request that you schedule a hearing for the reusable bag ordinance as soon as possible. It's been over a month since it came out of the committee, and it's definitely time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Oled, Ann, I'm gonna let you pronounce your last name. After you, we have Taylor Miller and Rebecca. Rebecca, I'm gonna have you come up and help me with your last name as well. So if I could see you guys line up behind Ann, please pronounce your last name for me.
Absolutely. My name is Ann Oliger. Very close.
Close.
I'm actually the campus organizer for CalPerg at USC. I've been working on protecting our oceans for the last two years, working specifically with students on USC, at USC as well. So I know you saw some of them at the meeting in December, and also the Energy and Environment Committee meeting about a month ago. Delivered nearly 10,000 petitions from the USC and UCLA chapters so far. But I am here to remind the council and Councilmember Labange that plastic, plastic bags clog storm drains and pollute our city streets, and it may not be particularly bad where you live, but where I live around USC, I find new plastic bags on our city streets every single morning when I walk my dog. And, you know, Caltrans estimates that it costs state and local governments, i.e. us as taxpayers, $375 million across the state for litter prevention and cleanup efforts. And since L.A. County estimates that plastic bags make up 25% of the litter stream, they're definitely a significant portion of these costs to taxpayers. So instead of cutting other things right now out of the budget, why not start with reducing litter cleanup costs? So again, President Weston, please schedule the bag ordinance hearing as soon as possible. It's really time. Thank you.
Thank you. Taylor Miller.
Hi, my name's Taylor Miller, and I'm a recent resident of Los Angeles, and it feels really good to say that. I'm here to remind Councilmember Labange that it takes two workers about an hour to produce over 100,000 plastic bags. But with a struggling garment industry, it could probably help to make reusable bags, creating jobs, not only for the garment industry, but for veterans from the Green Vets, L.A. And how many more reusable bags will homeboy industries be able to sell if there's more product out there? Banning plastic bags will create many, many jobs right here in Los Angeles, which is what we need at the moment. So please, President Weston, please schedule a hearing.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, this is Rebecca Shu. I'm a student from Duke University, but also an L.A. resident. I'm here to remind Councilmember Labange that plastic bags are littering our L.A. river. I've handed out photos to all of you so that you can see for yourselves. That's our river. And it costs taxpayer money to clean up so that we comply with our federally mandated TMDLs. A clean, vibrant L.A. river system can help revitalize struggling communities and promote growth and jobs for residents of L.A., Los Angeles. But first, we have to work on keeping the trash out. Please schedule the hearing, President Weston. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Zoss, Joseph Nguyen, I think it's Cole Lelly, I, last name Cole, Kelly.
Hi, I'm Kelly, and I'm a Los Angeles resident. My hometown is one of the cities in California that does have plastic bag ban, and I'm here to ask councilman, or tell Councilmember Labange about the double paying and cost of plastic grocery bags. And as a recent, as a college student, I am always allocating my money and my budget appropriately. And the thing with plastic bags is that L.A. residents like myself are being charged twice for plastic bags. First, per, in the cost of groceries per year, and second, as taxpayers, we are charged to clean them up as well. It is something we can really be without, and it isn't necessary, and I urge you to ban the plastic bags now. President Weston, please schedule a hearing on the plastic bag ordinance. We waited long enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Nguyen. I am a new Los Angeles city resident and currently West Point-bound as a cadet. I firmly believe it is in the best interest of the city of Los Angeles to move forward with the plastic, plastic bag ban. Several cities in the U.S., England, Mexico, India, Burma, Bangladesh, Rwanda, and Australia have already gone ahead and moved forward in removing plastic bags from their city or imposing taxes. I believe that the city of Los Angeles is somewhat behind its time in movement, in this movement, and urge the city to schedule a hearing for this issue.
Thank you. And before our next speaker sergeants, we will not be receiving any more general public comment cards. Please.
Hi, my name is Selby Cole, and I'm with Environment California. I'm here to talk to Councilmember Labange about my personal experience in his district. I've been campaigning on this issue over the past three years, and at this point, I've talked to literally thousands of Angelinos and gotten thousands of public comment cards, some of which we've delivered. And we've also raised thousands of dollars for this issue. One of the things I love about Los Angeles is how many different people live here. A man I talked to last night was from Hawaii, and he grew up seeing a lot of plastic on his beach. And so, a lot of people are behind this issue. We really care about it. And it's, President Weston, please schedule the hearing. It's time.
A little bird whispered in my ear, indicating that we're trying to put that, have that heard on the 23rd of this month. Issa Ballard, Arnold Sacks, Doghouse Dude.
Hi, my name's Issa Ballard, and I'm an organizer with the CalPerg Students, work with students at community colleges in the L.A. area. And I'm here to talk to Councilmember Labange about SB 1219, Senator Wolfsville, which he asked about in his motion. SB 1219 simply extends the failed existing plastic bag recycling program that's already in place, which doesn't work. It has never achieved more than a 10% recycling rate of plastic bags. And you know what happens when plastic bags are recycled? They're generally bundled up and sent to China or Mexico and burned. And I think that smoke is probably pretty toxic. Plastic bags are toxic from the beginning of their life to the end. It's a failed technology, and it's time to do away with it. So President Weston, please schedule a hearing. It's way past time. And thank you, council, for listening to all of us today. We look forward to seeing you again very, very soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks, followed by Mr. Dude.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. It was interesting listening to the comments from the people in the valley regarding the cuts you want to make to the transmission of the council meetings to the valley in San Pedro. Because I believe, you know, under President Garcetti, we had, pursuant to council rules, you're supposed to be here at 10 o'clock. And under President Weston, we have the, what, the on-time quorum, whatever the hell that is. So why don't you start the meetings? And why don't you let the public know what it costs for them to sit here for 20 minutes, approximately, three days a week? And I really appreciate the fact that you did limit Friday presentations from the crisp two hours down to about an hour, but you've extended the presentations to Tuesday and Wednesday. So that's a real political job right there. And that being said, in addition to looking at some questions about the budget, you know, two years ago, three years ago, when the DWP had trouble raising the $73 million for the transfer, it would have come to $216 million in a year. Then they got the Ecap raise, and the transfer went to $258, $258 million in a year. This past transfer is $250 million in a year. There's a difference of $8 million. So which one of the council members should we ask about, well, why'd it drop $8 million? Who's stepping up? That being said, the same thing could be said about the AB 1290 funds. Two years ago, the controller said he wanted to take $10 million. You, Mr. Weston, negotiated a deal with him to not take that much, only to take $800,000 from each district that has a redevelopment area in it. Now, last year, the controller said she's doing an audit, $27 million in AB 1290 funds. How did it go to get to grow?
Thank you.
And what happened to the other $100 million in redevelopment funds?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Dude, followed by DJ Miggs, followed by Donald Cronus. Mr. Dude.
Yes, my name is Juan Alcalan. On the internet, I'm known as the Doghouse Dude. And yes, plastic is bad for the environment. Very simple, right? Anyway, my main topic of conversation, as always, housing for every single human being in the world. There's no reason why human beings, being the smartest species, animal species in the planet, there's no reason why we keep each other homeless. The only motive for keeping each other homeless is greed. It's territoriality. I own this place, and you are not to trespass in this place. I own 100 places, and you better pay me rent, or your e, um, can I say ass? Your ass is out of there. Anyway, you know what I'm getting at? We spend our lives beating up on each other instead of helping one another. We need to create a parallel system where nobody will go homeless for any reason. We have a system now that creates homelessness. It throws families out of their places. It throws senior citizens out of the home they paid all their lives because they owe $1,000 in city tax. What kind of a stupid system have we created? It's time to change it. It's time to change a lot of things.
Thank you. Mr. Miggs, Mr. Miggs, followed by Donald Cronus, followed by Rose Nguyen.
First of all, I have zero respect for this kangaroo council. I'm, I'm speaking today on the illegal attempt to further regulate public squares in this city. You people clearly do not represent the 99%. You clearly have no intention to listen to the grievances that you all supported with your truthless resolution back in October. You, all of you, have completely missed the point of occupying the lawn last fall. We were there because we were indignant over the marriage of business and state, and what do you do? Put up an illegal fascist fence and thank the very corporations that we're angry at, spitting in the face of the 99%. You should all be ashamed. You should all be thrown out of office. If any of you had any honor at all, you would resign immediately. Instead, you're showing your true allegiances to the ruling elites who elect you. You do not represent the 99% that camped peacefully, airing their grievances in a beautiful splash of humanity around a building that has none. With closing parks and instituting draconian tent laws, you reveal your true colors. They are despicable. The fascist fence needs to come down. The homeless and houseless should be welcomed to the protection of City Hall Solidarity Park. Instead, you only listen to money, you only respond to campaign donations and business interests. In case you didn't notice, hundreds of thousands of people took to the streets across the country last May Day protesting that very concept, protesting all of you terrible corrupt politicians. You need to start listening to the 99%. We're only getting stronger.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donald Cronos. I, um, I'm not sure exactly how calm people are in seeing the fact that free speech is being silenced all over the country in basically every way imaginable. I don't think it's any coincidence, correct me if I'm wrong, that, uh, that they're planning on, uh, closing up city parks at the exact time that, um, people representing the population, people trying to make things better, have been holding meetings in city parks. Now, I think it's time we stop calling them city parks. These are public parks. They're intended for the public!
Watcher, keep your, like, the tone, the language down.
Are you saying I should be calm?
No, what I'm saying is you cannot yell and scream. That's what I'm saying. Make your point.
I'm making my point, and part of my point is that we should not be calm. We should not be acting calm. We should not be pretending to be calm. We should be doing something about this. This is extremely serious. Now, you want to tell me I should keep my tone of voice down? That's telling me to act calm!
Okay, your, your time is up. Help him find his seat, Sargent. Rose Nguyen, followed by Bilal Ali, and then we'll go to the Valley for Mary Ann Fogler.
I have to say, I'm not very good.
Help him find a seat.
Hi, my name's Rose Nguyen, and...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. She gets her, her time to speak. Let's let her speak. I know you had to wait for a bit, but welcome, Ms. Nguyen.
Hi, so my name's Rose Nguyen. I'm with Environment California, and I'm here to remind Councilmember Labonge that plastic bags are choking sea creatures. Um, sea turtles swim in the ocean, and they see a plastic bag, and they mistake it for a jellyfish, and then they choke to death. Uh, can you imagine a worse way to die? Um, so, we've all heard about the Pacific Garbage Patch, and, uh, it's, it's getting really bad out there. Uh, so, last summer, the International Program on the State of the Ocean, a panel of ocean scientists, uh, met at Oxford University, uh, and compared notes, and they found that, uh, uh, there is a shocking decline, uh, in the ocean, that there's a high risk of entering a phase of extinction of marine species unprecedented in human history. Uh, that means we have to do something now. Uh, and if you don't believe it, Councilmember Labonge, uh, you should take a boat out to Catalina and, uh, see it for yourself. And it's getting pretty bad out there. So I'm really excited that you've scheduled a meeting, uh, May 23rd, and we're excited to turn out people, uh, to the vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Bilal Ali, then we go out to the Valley for Mary Ann Fogler.
Bilal Ali, Occupy the Hood, Occupy LA. I'm here today because I'm appalled that the mayor of Los Angeles has instructed Councilman Weesar to, uh, draft up an ordinance that will limit the, uh, ours, uh, the use of the City Hall park. I see that as an assault on my constitutional right to, uh, assemble peacefully and bring grievance against a corrupt government, uh, structure. Just like the raid on Occupy LA, it wasn't just a violation of our freedom to assemble, but it was assault on the Constitution itself. I repeat that. That raid was an assault on the Constitution itself. We as occupiers are demanding that this city council refuse to support any request or the adoption of any ordinance that would further perpetrate the further erosion of our constitutional rights. We are the 99%. We will bring the full force of our movement to defend our right to occupy public space, to defend the right to put public back in the term of public space. So do not curtail our right to be included in public discourse. So we ask you, do not, do not sink into a fascist state, a police state, and protect the 99% and stop protecting the 1%. Come to the people, join the people, join the 99%. Because even though you're 99%ers, you will protect the 1%ers to the, to the core. So we're asking you, let's change history, be on the right side of history, all property to the people. We are the 99%.
Thank you. Now we go to the Valley for our last speaker, Mary Ann Fogler.
I can't believe you're gonna hang the ax on here on public comment down here, video conferencing. You should look at yourselves, and look at how much it costs you to set up your meeting down there at City Hall. How dare you do that? This is a major chutzpah to cut off the San Fernando Valley, its main source down here to the downtown City Hall when we needed succession. This is the reason, folks, why we wanted to break the valley off from you. You're breaking us off. That's exactly what you're doing. When you're cutting us off, you're cutting us off from the city. And what you're doing is you're saving lousy $10,000. How much does it cost you to run your, your, your meeting exactly? Breakdown. CIO man, Miguel Santana, must be fired. He must go. The unions must rise up and stop this outrageous act. This is a tru- this is a terrible thing you're doing to the B people in the San Fernando Valley. They are the more courser, the ones that are paying all the bulk of your taxes down there at downtown, who is you, you brag about how you're rebuilding downtown, while you're taking away everything here, and you won't give a major breakdown of how much it costs your staff, how much it costs before you have your quorum, all this ambition bet. I want the whole rigmarole of all the costs it costs down there, just like what Sharon Brewer is gonna reiterate. She's gonna back me up 1,000%. And furthermore, you people are overspending. And you think $10,000 is gonna save you your budget, Mr. CIO man? It's not. You're gonna end up going to jail, white crime, white call crime. All of you are stealing from the taxpayers, because this money is not supposed to be saved for you to put in reserve and then do what you want with it later, such as saving, uh, people, 40 families, or whatever you want to spend it for. It's supposed to be for us, the taxpayers here. And I need accountability on how much you're spending for your meetings now!
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Fogler. Thank you very much. That concludes general public comment. Mr. Weesar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify for some of the public comments that were made, and I point a personal privilege, that there has been no decision on the hours set for the City Hall park. That discussion has just started. There were some proposals that, uh, were pushed back, and now we are just beginning to have that discussion about what the appropriate hours should be. So there's been no decision on that. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Let's keep it down. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Mr. Caretz, I believe it, it is, it's been a request by the Chair of Arts Parks that we continue for one day, Item 6 and 30. So without objection, those, that, those items will be...
Can't do 30. We're, it's a special...
Oh, we'll, we'll go back and do 30. So we'll do 6, 6 now. Uh, Mr. Garcetti, we do have a commission appointment. I know you have to go. Do you have enough time?
Yeah, it's great, sir.
Okay. So if, Mr. Weesar, if we can quickly deal with Item 1?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President. And if I could ask, uh, Mr. Mancino, please come up, uh, to our table and, uh, councilmembers, what's before us is an appointment to the El Pueblo de los Angeles Historical Monument Authority. Uh, there has been a vacancy in this position, and the mayor's office has proposed, uh, Mr. Mancino. Uh, he has already met with several of us, including, uh, members of the Arts Parks Committee, and, uh, we had a long conversation about some of the issues at El Pueblo. I understand that he fully understands them, and we've had a lot of progress. For 15 years, the merchants hadn't had any leases there. We finally got those, uh, with something that everybody could agree to. The Methodist Church, who was in limbo for some time, we finally got a lease for them. We're moving forward on rehabilitating and preserving the Ciqueros mural that, uh, is a treasure for the City of Los Angeles and hasn't gotten the attention it deserves. The Italian Hall is now, uh, under reconstruction, and we're working with the Chinese Museum to continue the work they have been doing to remind us of the city's Chinese, uh, history. So, uh, we have a lot that we've accomplished, a lot more to do, uh, but the El Pueblo area is the birthplace of the City of Los Angeles. There's a lot of work to be done to continue to market and, uh, bring tourists to the area, support our merchants, support the history, and we look forward to working with you. I thought we'd just take a moment, if you could introduce yourself to the council and what you have in mind. Thank you, Mr. Mancino.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of council. I'm Doug Mancino. I live in West Los Angeles, and I'm really privileged to, uh, have this opportunity to serve the City of Los Angeles, uh, by, uh, becoming a Commissioner for the El Pueblo de los Angeles Monument Authority. While I'm a tax lawyer by training and also do a lot of healthcare work, uh, one of the important parts of my life and my wife's life is our service to the community, and I see this as a wonderful opportunity to just continue to do that. Uh, and I've learned a lot about the El Pueblo, uh, during the past, uh, several weeks, uh, in talking with various members of council, uh, walking the grounds myself. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to interfacing, not just with, uh, the merchants and the museums and other cultural aspects down there, but also, uh, working with the entire El Pueblo to really expand its reach and make sure that it remains the, uh, important treasure, uh, for the City of Los Angeles and reflecting its, of its long cultural history.
Maybe you could introduce your wife to us.
My lovely wife, Carol Mancino.
Nice to meet you. Mr. Caretz. Mr. Caretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, I, I met with Mr. Mancino. I'm proud to have him as a resident of the 5th District. Um, and I think his experience, uh, with nonprofits and his activism in the community will bode well for, uh, this critical historic resource. So, we're glad that he's willing to do this and, uh, use his experience, uh, to, to be helpful and, uh, recommend an eye vote.
Mr. Reyes.
I know Councilman Garcetti asked to leave, but, um, one question. In, in the past, there've been different, uh, movements, if you will, to find resources, and some of it speaks to the notion of commercialization and looking at basic, general, you know, off-the-shelf type brands with big companies. I don't want to start naming names, but, um, but to preserve this place as a special place with historic significance, can you just give us a quick perspective on that?
Sure. I, I, I believe it is a very important, uh, aspect of the City of Los Angeles in that it should preserve its, um, really accessibility. And, uh, frankly, some, with my, some of my experience, I think I can be effective in bringing, uh, more private support to, uh, work with the continued enhancement of the resource down there. Uh, I know one of the things that I said to, uh, Councilmember Weesar when we met is that, uh, my wife may disagree with this, I might add, but I'm a pretty good listener. And one of the first, uh, things that I will do is to really, uh, spend time with the merchants, with the, uh, other, uh, organizations down there, and really learn what, uh, is really important to them in terms of preserving this cultural heritage.
Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Mancino, just want to welcome you to this commission, and thank you for your ability to serve and your willingness to serve, uh, this gem that I call El Pueblo in the City of Los Angeles. And, uh, your character, compassion, and commitment to serve will go a long way in this commission. Specifically, I have a love, uh, for the Italian Hall as well, making sure that, uh, we, it's during the rebuilding phase, making sure that, uh, it moves forward, and I ask for your continued support on that. Uh, my son's class recently visited El Pueblo and, um, had, had lunch down there, and he will never forget the time spent in El Pueblo. But we, um, with your commitment, I want to, um, thank you again, you and your wife, the, Mr. Garcetti called her the co-commissioner, but I'd like to thank your wife as well for allowing you to serve. Thank you. I, um, to ask for an eye vote.
Mr. Labonge, five seconds. I'm timing you.
Bring a bike rental facility to the birthplace of Los Angeles. Bike rental!
Thank you. So on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Mr. Garcetti?
Item 2. Item 2. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, we're taking before us next item number 2. Congratulations to our new Commissioner, and thank you, uh, to the public for the public comment before. There was a lot that was said about, uh, those who are at the bottom end of the stick right now. And today, we have before us, uh, a project in the heart of Hollywood at 1800 Argyle to build a hotel, uh, in the heart of Hollywood where 15 years ago, we had tourists that came on average for 23 minutes. Today, with the turnaround of Hollywood, with what has been built by many of the men and women that are here, by a community that has come together to talk about exactly those things we heard earlier, how we can have better parking and amenities, how we can have a community that has the mixed-use retail and commercial spaces and entertainment spaces all clustered together. Hollywood has entered its second golden age. But the city is certainly not in a golden age, and this country is not. We have people that are out of work right here, right now, in these chambers. We've got people right now, like the son of one of the women in my office, who is a plumber. Joseph Martinez has been out of work for two and a half years. He's a good plumber. He's been trained by our unions. He's done a good job, and all he asks is for the chance to have an honest day of work. He's somebody who wants to prove himself not by asking for a handout, or even for a hand up. He just wants to be able to get his hands on the job and work, to support his family. Another woman in my office, the father of her children, has been out of work for a couple years in building trades. He can't make his payments to help support the family. This has an impact on our children. It has an impact on our communities, on our schools, and on the strength of this city. So we have before us, colleagues, a project, and I want to say a few things about it. Because there are jobs proposed right now, right here, to put people in these chambers back to work, and there are jobs that will come after it gets built, permanent jobs as a hotel, that also I want to address as well. But my message today is loud and clear. Let's get this done. Let's get this city back to work. Let's get it done right. Let's provide jobs for the workers that are living right now in their cars, unemployed. Let's provide parking to the neighborhood as we have here in this project before us. Let's give community the open space that is also provided for as part of the development agreement here. And let's make sure that we don't live, leave any of these current workers and future workers behind. It's good-paying jobs that have rebuilt Hollywood. I met with ironworkers when we were raising the W Hotel, who themselves talked about what it was like to be able to provide for their families. We had a groundbreaking, and I've seen operating engineers and plumbers and electricians and all the men and women who are part of the project right now to bring Emerson College, a brand-new campus, onto Sunset Boulevard and soon across the street at the old site of the old spaghetti factory. These good-paying jobs are rebuilding Hollywood. But we also haven't left behind service jobs. When the W Hotel got built, we helped make sure that got organized. We have a restaurant there that recently got organized, so that people don't have to live in poverty wages there either, once those who build the buildings are gone. What's proposed here today is a limited-stay hotel, but I believe that limited-stay hotel doesn't have to mean limited wages or benefits. We've shown how to do it right here in this horseshoe before, and let's do it again. And I have a series of motions that are here before us that I ask us to all collectively accept as friendly amendments, that will make us take that formula that we have made work here before, to sit down with our great CLA and look at our TOT, our hotel tax, and other tools that we have. We've got a developer who's agreed to pay for that, to make sure we can see if this can be a win-win. But I want to be clear, we're not going to hold anything up today. We need to move forward. Jerry Miller is one of the most experienced people in the country. We've worked with, um, consultants who are able to look at how we can make sure that the value, once this gets built, provides not only good jobs today, some 300 to 350 working people who can be in the ground later this year, but also the 35 to 50 permanent jobs that will come from this, to make sure that those are good as well. I support and have always supported car check neutrality. We've made great gains in our hotels in Hollywood, at our restaurants in Hollywood, and I will side-by-side with the hotel union, make sure that we continue to fight to organize this and use those tools that Mr. Miller has agreed to do. But as I said before, it is time to get the city and our people back to work. And I'd like to ask the folks that are here in support, the working men and women who are with us today in chambers, just to stand up for a second, if you're in favor of this project moving forward. Colleagues, I ask for your support today. I promise that the path forward with the motions that we have, and Mr. Miller has promised, that we will turn this around and make sure that we look at what happens after it gets built. But with our vote today, we will take a step forward in making sure that the golden age of, second golden age of Hollywood continues and that this city gets back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. So what, Mr. Garcetti, what we're gonna do at this time is we're gonna have Ms. Perry speak, and then I will take public comment. Ms. Perry.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. The fastest way for us to recover, uh, is to continue...
The fastest way for us to recover is to continue to build and to continue to grow and to continue to expand. And I'm very happy that you have this project here on the table and that it will be able to put people back to work and to be able to work through the complex issues that come behind and come after. The building and the construction are obviously ones that have great merit and should be resolved. I've been able to do that many, many times over in downtown Los Angeles, and I know that you'll be able to accomplish that in Hollywood. But the best part is, people will go back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Rachel Torres, Robbie Hunter, Pat Stewart. I want to see three folk in a straight line.
Good morning. My name's Rachel Torres. I'm a research analyst for Unite Here Local 11. I'm also a resident of Hollywood, and I live a couple blocks away from this project. I deeply respect the comments that this council has made on the quality of jobs. However, we cannot cut corners with the environmental considerations of this project. First, the project has the potential to cause significant parking-related impacts because it does not provide enough onsite parking spaces. The addendum states that the proposed restaurant and meeting space areas are assumed to be used by hotel guests only, and no separate parking requirement is assumed for those areas. This assumption is unwarranted. In fact, failing to analyze the potentially significant parking impacts violates CEQA, and failing to ensure that there are adequate parking spaces provided violates the city's general plan and municipal code. Second, the existing building, which is to be demolished as part of the project, was built in the 1960s. However, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency did not begin to regulate asbestos until the 1970s. The potentially significant adverse health risks caused by asbestos exposure to nearby residents and to workers must be analyzed, and appropriate mitigation measures must be imposed. Third, the addendum described the project as being 15 stories and 196 feet tall. The project being approved now is 16 stories. While the addendum concluded that the aesthetic impact of 15-story hotel was not significant, there's been no analysis of the aesthetic impacts of the 16-story building. And finally, neither the MND nor the addendum considers the potential wind tunnel effects on pedestrians at a street level. In fact, the city commissioned a wind tunnel study for the Casin Sepulveda Project last year. If the Casin Sepulveda Project requires a wind tunnel study, then the hotel project that you're being asked to consider now also requires a wind tunnel study because it involves a building that is as tall, if not taller, than the tallest CSP building. For these and other reasons, we respectfully request that this council not move forward until all of these issues are addressed and not certify a project that may be environmentally impacted to our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Robbie Hunter, Pat Stewart, Kevin Bass.
Robbie Hunter, Los Angeles Building and Construction Trades Council, represent 140,000 construction workers.
You brought some of your friends, huh?
I owe them all money. They're lining up until I -- yeah. You know, I got a feeling, you know, this project has already been through a false CEQA, and I got a feeling if the speaker before me got what she wanted, all of the complaints that she just had would just disappear. Today, this project, exactly what we need, is private development, private financing, and projects with private contractors employing private construction companies, who all of these people behind me work for. All of these workers work for private construction companies. The developer here has agreed to do an agreement that all the work will be done by local workers and local contractors. It has even done an agreement that the teamsters will do the concrete. And they could not do a better job in the outreach from which they have done with the community, addressing the parking issues, addressing open space by helping finance a park. This development is exactly what we need to get people back to work in this city. And the critics of this project are the CM1s that are stopping projects everywhere on this city, wanting to give Los Angeles the reputation as somewhere where you cannot build anything. We applaud the city council. We believe that they'll move it forward today, and we're looking forward to putting people to work. All of the members behind me and their families that live in this city would really appreciate this project moving forward today, and we thank everyone for their help.
Thank you, Robbie. Pat and Kevin. Pat, they pushed you to the end of the line.
Good morning. My name is Pat Stewart. I'm a representative for IBW Local 11. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today to speak on behalf of the project. First of all, what Robbie said, and then, secondly, we believe that this project has no significant environmental impacts. It is in compliance with CEQA and should move forward with a mitigated negative declaration today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brother Bass, good to see you again.
Good to be seen, President. Good morning, President, and all of the other council members. My name's Kevin Bass with Painters &amp; L.A. Trades. I'm the Assistant Political Director, and we stand in support of this project for everything that Councilman Garcetti said and Councilwoman Perry said, in addition to what Mr. Hunter said. But this is a project, we have to look at the big picture. It's going to put people back to work. It's going to increase the commerce. But the other thing is, we only need to look at downtown to see what this project will do. This could be the L.A. Live of Hollywood. This could be the linchpin project to bring Hollywood back to where it's been, where it hasn't been for many years. If we look at each and every one of our council districts, we could probably find other projects that are being held up for various reasons, and this is one that should not be. Every variance and ordinance that was brought up has been addressed. We have a good developer that is going to have local hire. It's going to be all-union, and I believe this developer will also take care of the other situation as far as the service end of this and make everyone happy. So we should not delay this another day, so let's move it forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nicole Shaheenian, Mr. Herman, and Mr. Sax.
Nicole Shaheenian with the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Hollywood Chamber and its over 900 members, we're here to show our strong support for this project and its over 365 jobs. We have met with the developer and discussed the plans for the proposed hotel project. The site of the project is currently occupied by a five-story dated office building that does not meet the basic expectations for office users today. We believe the proposed hotel will improve the neighborhood and complement other buildings and uses in the area. We are pleased with the parking spaces that exceed city requirements, and we feel that NCA has become an important stakeholder in the Hollywood area. Projects like this, with its 400 jobs, are exactly what is needed by our community. And in the words of our council member, Eric Garcetti, "Let's get this done." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Sax.
This will be brief. What the city says, the city will do, no matter what we decide or who decides. Hold my time. Thank you.
Mr. Sax.
Good morning again, Arnold Sax. Pretty fascinating, Mr. Garcetti, that you mentioned the site of the old spaghetti factory. Do you have any comments regarding the property tax manipulation that occurred in this county's office, where they lowered the property tax for donations and then now the rigor and mull that's going on there? You also mentioned the transit occupancy tax. Does that mean that it's already been waived with this owner of the new hotel? And where will that funding -- where will the city make up the loss of funding there? Just out of curiosity, because we talk so much about jobs, can you get a count exactly at the $5 to $7 billion renovation that's going on at LAX? Exactly how many jobs in construction were created during that renovation of the Tom Bradley Terminal? And how many new jobs have been formed? There's a project that occurred in the city that everybody in the council chamber said will create jobs, jobs, jobs. Just get a count. And how about the Marriott Complex at downtown L.A. Live? Somebody mention that. Can you get a count on how many construction jobs were created at the Marriott and how many other jobs? And were those jobs living wage ordinance jobs? Because we know what the living wage ordinance is for the people that go to work there is $11 an hour, $12 an hour, but without health insurance. So that's a real winner. Jobs, jobs. Who doesn't want a job? But what kind of jobs? You know, I talked about on Friday that there was a company that men in Torrance, Pelican Products, and the article mentioned 600,000 manufacturing jobs have been lost in the state of California in 10 years. So how many of those jobs are going to be recreated through this construction? Yes, it's nice to have construction workers going back to work, but how many manufacturing jobs will be done, will be created? What is the course of action there?
Thank you. That concludes public comment on this item. We have Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine.
I'm going to speak right now.
Mr. Zine, you're going to forfeit your time.
I have Congresswoman Hahn on the phone, so if you'll pardon my -- can somebody else --
Tell her we all said hello, but speak to the item.
Mr. Weston says -- hold on one second. Okay, I just want to acknowledge, this council member, Hahn, who's acknowledging that we're making progress in Los Angeles, Mr. Garcetti, it's our former colleague, but to Robbie and the folks. You folks would much rather be out there working than sitting here in chambers, listening to all this process and how we're going to get you back to work to make it happen. So I want to acknowledge the trades that are here supporting this. I am a strong supporter of it. The trades need to get back to work. Robbie and you folks are making it happen. Unanimous support will come down to get you folks back to work so you can support your families. That's where you'd rather be than be here in council. So God bless you, and hopefully we can get this done today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Nice segue to get back on the subject, Mr. Zine. Mr. Garcetti to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Please give the Congresswoman our regards, and sorry to interrupt your phone call, Mr. Zine. We want to make sure that all of us here today get a great unanimous vote for this. I think that what we have, I understand the testimony that's been given here today. We have shown the way forward in Hollywood to make these win-win. We've built the W Hotel. We've redone the Renaissance Hotel. We have a new hotel that's coming up at Hollywood and Highland. We've built new housing. We brought the Academy Awards. They just announced they're going to stay for 20 more years. A million visitors are back in Hollywood that haven't been there for a long time this year because of the Cirque du Soleil and the work that we did at Hollywood and Highland. In fact, it was our number-one tourist year last year here in Los Angeles. But those people need a place to stay, and our people need a place to work, and we need to make sure, long-term, that those are good jobs and those workers, those 30, 35 to 50 jobs are there too. So the work that we're going to do around the clock is achieve just that. But in the meantime, let us move this forward. Thank you to everybody who's taking time out of your lives to be here. We hope that a few of you may, later this year, be able to pick up, whether you're a laborer, whether you're a painter, whether you're an ironworker, whether you're an electrician, whether you're a plumber. No matter who you are, that you should have a good place to work, and we'll make sure for our hotel workers, long-term too, that they will as well. Thank you, and I ask for an eye vote.
Okay, Madam Clerk. Are you ready? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, that item is passed. Mr. Labons, fourth with on 27.
Fourth with on Prop K 27.
Okay, fourth with. And I've been informed by Mr. Reyes that this morning I said it was March 8th. So it is not. It is May. Okay. Mr. Cardenas, you wanted to take an item out of order. Was it 28? Item 28 is now before us.
Thank you very much, members. Could we have the planning staff come up? Councilmembers, this is something that we've long awaited and something that our constituents have been asking us about for many, many, many years, and I'm glad to have the support of then-member Greg Smith. And I had promised him that with the Planning Department and the staff within the city and the city council, that we would eventually bring this to the floor. And the day is here. Even though Greg Smith isn't here, we have Mitch Englander, who's now the representative of the 12th. And also, I'd like to thank Councilmember Zine for all of his support and help in trying to bring this to fruition. We're talking about shopping carts. Shopping carts with facilities within the city of Los Angeles. I think it's very important for everybody to understand that shopping carts are a tool that people use when they're shopping. However, when they leave the site and end up in the streets where children play with them, where they're abandoned, where they're not only an eyesore, it's a public safety issue. Everybody knows that any conscious driver, if you're driving down the street and all of a sudden something jumps in your way, like a loose shopping cart or what have you, that's going to cause an accident and a lot of damage, and people could get hurt. But at the same time, I think it's important that we, as local government, hold to our responsibility of understanding what the issue is and then trying to provide a solution that's well-balanced for everybody involved. We've had many, many meetings over the last few years with the Grocers Association, individual grocery store owners. We've talked with staff to try to figure out how we can handle this, and there has been precedent legislation at the local government level throughout the state. So we've tried to balance the legality of how do we bring this to fruition with how Los Angeles should handle it. And if I could have the staff outline what the basics of this ordinance is when it comes to the shopping carts and which stores does it affect and under what conditions, as it stands right now.
And Mr. Cardenas, you ought to know, well, I'm sure you know this is a 12-vote item. We're going to shortly lose Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, so if we can make it real brief.
Sure. Good morning. Tom Rothman from the Planning Department. Today, we're here to present a Phase 1 of a two-phase program to require that all stores in the city of Los Angeles that have six or more shopping carts maintain those shopping carts onsite.
New stores.
Today, Phase 1 will be just for the new stores and for stores that undergo major remodels that they must --
And a major remodel is 51, 50-plus percent.
50% of the value of the store or more. And so we've laid out a list of menu items that the store could -- of programs the store could implement.
So they're not required to use one answer, one system. They have a variety that they could choose from.
Yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, we left it fairly flexible for all the new stores and major remodels. And Gabriela will go into details. And then Phase 2 will be working with the Bureau of Sanitation on having this program extended to all existing stores with six or more shopping carts.
Gabriela Juarez, City Planning. To delineate the options that we've laid out as examples in the ordinance, there are five options, but the last option also is to the satisfaction of building and safety and code enforcement. So there are, there is more flexibility than just what's delineated in the report.
Okay. Thank you very much. And also, I'd like to thank the chairman of the Plum Committee, Ed Reyes, for helping to shepherd this along. It was a long process, but as you just pointed out, various departments were involved. A lot of people gave their input, both from the council, from the staff, and from third parties, grocery owners, the association, et cetera. And although nothing like this is perfect, I think that it is probably one of the better, well-balanced approaches that any municipality in the city of California has come up with because there are laws and there are statutes that we need to follow, and I believe that we've done that here. So I want to thank you, the staff, very much for this. It's been a long time coming, and then hopefully we'll get the study done for Phase 2, and then we'll have a comprehensive plan that covers all of the markets of six, excuse me, all of the facilities, not just markets, all the facilities that have at least six carts or more. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. And I know that we're on a time with this. We're going to be soon banning plastic bags, paper bags, et cetera. And there's a concern that many of those folks are going to put the items in the shopping cart and wheel that shopping cart out, whether it be a food market and some of the large stores, Target, Walmart, they now sell groceries. So now we've compounded the problem. When it comes to the options, the list, six options, can you enumerate those options that the stores could implement for this particular program?
Sure. One of the options is to place bollards up so that the shopping carts can actually not leave the premises and creates a barrier. The second option --
So they'll be staying in the parking lot.
So staying in the parking lot or on the premises of the shopping center or the supermarket. The second option is a wheel-locking device that many of us are very familiar with, an invisible fence that jams the lock, jams the wheels as soon as they try to move beyond it. Customer service, so that there's actually just somebody on staff in the supermarket that will promise to take your groceries out to your car and then retrieve the shopping cart once the groceries are in the car. And any other method to the satisfaction of the Bureau of Street Services?
Okay, now, see, here's the problem I have. Street services doesn't have enough personnel to do the job now, and there's no way they're going to have personnel to enforce anything. And we can't get enforcement for the things we're complaining about now. What about a fine on the market for not complying? Something practical and real. I don't want to be anti-business, but if we're going to be serious about shopping carts, and Mr. Cardenas has been championing this, although, Mr. Smith, and it's a nuisance in the area. I've got many shopping centers where you see carts strewn all over the neighborhood, and it's a continuing problem. And you'll call the market, "Well, they call the retrieval service." Well, it's a different retrieval service. I mean, the whole thing is total disastrous, it is now. So we need to make it better.[1791.96] So we need to make it better. What about a fine on that particular establishment for not doing something to comply to keep those shopping carts off of the public sidewalks and park, sidewalks? I mean, if you go to Fallbrook Mall, I don't want to pick on any specific one.
Members, we are going to lose the 12th vote necessary for passing this ordinance.
Fairly quick. That's Phase Two exactly with the Council.
So there will be fines attached.
We are going to be working on a program for all existing stores. When they're found, there will be a fee attached. We're working on a fee study. That's why Phase Two is taking a little bit longer.
Additionally, excuse me, there is actually a fine on the books now, however, because of all the issues that you've delineated in terms of having sufficient city staff, that is also part of the problem, and we're trying to close the gap on all of those loops.
Okay, thank you. We're working on it.
Okay, again, Mr. Corretts, you're next, but note that in a minute or so, we will lose 12.
Well, I'll try to be quick. I appreciate Councilmember Cardenas bringing forward a solution to this issue. What I'm not clear on is why using a mandatory cart retrieval system couldn't also be considered. I know in West Hollywood where we have some major markets and a lot of people taking the shopping carts out, having a very active retrieval system resulted in my office not receiving a single complaint in 13 years about this subject because it was done well, and it was done by every market in the city. Is there any reason why that couldn't be considered as one of the options to solve the problem?
One of the basic practical reasons, it's a great question, one of the main practical reasons is we have thousands of stores in the city of Los Angeles, and in smaller cities like that, it's easier to contain because it's easier to see exactly where those carts are coming from. So the blending of the chaos in this city is a lot, lot different than the smaller cities.
Could they be required to show a contract with a company that doesn't?
That is one of the panoply of answers to this, that they have to have a hard and fast contract like that, or they have to have the, adopt the other system where the wheels lock if they try to take it off the site. That is one of the options.
So is that, that will be one of the options that's studied as part of the solution?
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Englander.
I actually had a lot of comments and questions, and I'm going to brief, knowing that we're going to lose a quorum, but I do, we do want to say that in its current form, the way that it's written, I absolutely do not support this, except for the fact that A is now written, item 28, that says that we're going to include existing stores because it's an unfair competitive advantage, number one, but number two, it only solves part of the problem. But the idea that we're going to be coming back with the study, that I do ask for your yes vote in this now, but that's a commitment to support when the study comes back and forcing it for all stores. It doesn't work, it's not one-sided. We can't just do existing stores and remodels. It's got to be all of them or none of them. On top of that, Mr. Zine brought up the issue of the bag ban. That's going to be coming before us before the study is complete. And so whoever's working on that, I would ask that you bifurcate that and start looking at that separately because we're going to solve one problem and create another with banning both plastics and paper and carts. Now we're going to have a real issue. Or just doing one or the other, we're going to have all these carts on our streets everywhere. And so we've got to look at this holistically. I ask for your support simply because it makes sense to do it citywide for all of them. And I also want to compliment Mr. Cardenas' tenacious work on this. He has been working exhaustively for many years, both with Councilman Smith, and I worked on that with him as well, and up until now, to try to solve this problem that is causing a blight and really a public safety nuisance in all of our districts. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, this has been taking a long time, and it's a reflection of the fact that we don't have sufficient staff to move everything the way we want it to move, especially we have 40% of the staff gone in the Planning Department. But my real point here is, this is a starting point. So I want to thank Councilman Cardenas for his tenacity in not losing focus on this. But this is a beginning point. This is not the answer to everything. We have now a stepping stone to actually stand on and say, this is firm, let's move forward. I'm hoping in the study, we look at other options as we proceed down this discussion, through this discussion. In my district, we have supermarkets that provide their own shuttles, where the carts aren't necessary, the transit-dependent could actually have the ability to move their foods to their home without having to think about a shopping cart because there's a shuttle there. There's enough volume in the market where they can afford to cover the cost of a shuttle. Now, if the different markets in these pockets in our city where you have a supermarket every three blocks where to share in those costs, and those are evaluations, we should be able to propose, so that way they lower their cost and having to deal with retrieval, with fines, the overhead of managing these carts on a shuttle can address the needs of the transit-dependent, especially the seniors who cannot carry these bags, who are waiting in the sun in the bus stops, because we know our public system is not adequate to address the needs of the transit-dependent. So the shuttle systems are, I think, key, and that's something we should put in the menu of issues to address as we do the follow-up study. So I stand to support this as a stepping stone. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay.
And that's adopted as amended.
Fourth with. Mr. Labange, you want to take up 29?
Yeah, 29, real quick, this is very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On this item right here, we have good news from our sister city of Berlin. They're going to initiate non-stop service for the first time between Los Angeles and Berlin. Mark Adams is here, LAX staff will be there to welcome him. One of the great things is the initiation of non-stop service, direct to points throughout. This is a long-haul flight. We welcome Air Berlin this week, three-time service for our sister cities and friends. It's a great opportunity. Thank you, Mr. President, members. Thank you for joining me in this.
Thank you. On this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that brings us, forthwith, that brings us where? Madam Clerk?
Item 22, call special for carts.
Item 22, I have Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you, good afternoon. Arnold Sacks, a quick First Amendment lease with Raytheon Company, LAX Airport. So I was just wondering, because last year, a couple of years ago, there was a problem with a lease with the security company that runs the taxicabs, and that they had a lease with a food vending truck that was also on airport property, that was never really addressed, that they were making over $250,000 a year. And I was wondering, since you're addressing this, an additional $25,099 in annual revenue during the remaining term of the lease, that's like $2,000 a month. That's pretty, that's pretty ridiculous. That wouldn't even pay for the staples that they use for the paperwork.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's get ready, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item.
Excuse me, Mr. President. For that item 22, just for the record, recommendation number one should have read Board of Airport Commissioners rather than Los Angeles Harbor Department.
So be it. So are we on item 23?
Yes, call special for carts.
If you have multiple carts, and since there are no people here, you may want to stay up closer to us.
Thank you. Good afternoon again, Arnold Sacks. You're going to spend $100,000 again on a study regarding parking spaces. It's a redundancy of the programs here. You had a problem with people parking in the driveways in West LA, around UCLA, and Venice with the vehicles, the oversized vehicles parking in Venice area. And now you're going to spend $100,000 on a different kind of study regarding angled parking. And I'm reminded that Councilman Rosendahl authorized $100,000 for a study regarding transit-oriented development at the Green Line at the airport, except the Green Line's not being built. So I was wondering, whatever happened to that study and how'd that progress? Because I know from information, we have them studying this too. Thank you.
Thank you. So on that item, we can open the roll, we can close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that brings us, I believe, to item 24. Call it special by carts?
Yes.
See, now I'm doing your job. Mr. Arminik Norjanian, Mr. Herman, and then we go to the Valley. Come on, Mr. Norjanian.
Good morning, City Council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. As a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate, actually, I endorse that Resolution 24 introduced by Councilmembers Kores and Kri Korean, that would actually require every person whose firearm is stolen or lost to notify law enforcement within 48 hours. This is very important to ensure safety, Angelinos, public safety as well. It's actually, this is part of a measure, you know, that would create safety, you know, that would uphold gun safety, you know. And actually, such a right-wing organization like NRA may be revolt and maybe oppose gun safety laws, but actually, I very much must bring my gratitude to you, City Council members, for actually upholding gun safety and bringing, you know, making public safety, you know, priority, you know. And actually, this particular measure will actually, if it becomes part of a Los Angeles municipal code, will actually ensure that nobody will be able to misuse firearms or actually sell firearms, you know, illegally to organized criminals, you know. And actually, I ask City Council members to vote unanimously, to vote unanimously for this gun safety measure, you know, but actually provide, make sure that no gun is lost and actually that everybody who would lose a gun would report it to the authorities.
We've created so many bills in regards to our safety, but in regards to possession of a firearm, it's a right, and we should have in our homes or within our safety firearms. So I don't see anything other than why create another bill to basically slow down this process? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's go to the Valley. Donna Pierman and Marion Fogler. Ms. Pierman.
Thank you. Anyway, it doesn't say what happened if somebody didn't report this in 48 hours, which has bothered me. And I want to know, is this really a problem? Is this something that we're causing, making a problem? And what do, you know, if it's, if those who usually do will call within the 48-hour time period, if not, it's because those who didn't realize it was, that one item was stolen or that could not be found? Do you wish everyone who forgot which safe they placed to put it, to call the police and automatically call it lost and cause a lot of time trying to find an item that could very well be at the house? So I don't believe that this is a good law. I, you know, you're going to go after people who didn't get in there in 40 hours, and what if for some reason they didn't be able to get within 48 hours? And I don't believe they'll be reasonable, and I believe this is unfair law, and I don't think you should pass it. I'll pass it on to Marion, who will probably say better things and more clear. Thank you.
Well, I know what's going on here. Just another stepping stone towards totalitarianism. And the fact is that it's a, it's a, of course, it's rational to report your gun stolen or lost if it's, if you know it. Okay? So if it's, if it's there, as long as it's there, and you know it's in the house, you don't have to worry about it. But this is a very, to me, this is a rational law, but it's unfortunately, it's just more layered bureaucracy, more layering, okay? It's more work with our police department. We have enough to take care of already. And, you know, your cost down there is costing us more than down here. So I think what you're doing is, every time you pass a law like this, you're adding on the costs. And I think it's just more work, more money than $10,000 a year, I think, even than that $19 an hour here compared to what it's costing you down there to have people who are going to be pro speaking on this matter or any of your issues there, costing more money. We like to know the breakdown because the fact is, is that 81 cars on your committee, I know this is off there, but you know, I'm just trying to illustrate here, you pass bills like this so that you can waste our money and not really allow us to have our video conferencing, and I think this is an outrage. Oh, by the way, the NRA is for gun safety. They are for gun safety, absolutely. Mr., that other guy, he doesn't know what he's talking about, so, you know, he's really off track on that. And they surely would be behind this. It's a very good thing to have. Thank you.
Mr. Zine, and Mr. Reyes, if I can get you to...
Thank you. The lost states or the proposal, 48 hours is the time the person knew or reason we should have known that the firearm had been lost or stolen, which is more than reasonable once they become aware of it. Anyone who has a firearm and it is stolen, if it's used in a crime, the police are going to be looking at that individual who's registered to. So it's advantageous for them to make that report to the police. And if they're on vacation, they come home two weeks later, they find the gun stolen, well, it's 48 hours from the time they discover it. So I think it's more than reasonable, and it's appropriate that law enforcement know who's got the guns that are stolen, and if they're in the hands of someone that they shouldn't be, and it's a stolen weapon, officer comes in contact with that person, they should have that on file. So I totally support this. It's good legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine. Our next speaker is Councilman Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're doing this partly because it's very easily quantifiable that there's a necessity for this. States without mandatory lost or stolen gun reporting laws have two and a half times the rate of crime guns being exported to other states to be used in crimes. And gun owners realize this, and so the NRA on this one is way out of sync with gun owners. In a study done last year, 94% of gun owners support these kinds of laws. So I think it's clear, they understand that these wind up being used in crimes and that early reporting greatly reduces such a usage, and so I ask for an eye vote.
Okay, seen no one else on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, move that out forward. Councilman?
Go forthwith.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item 25, call special for carts.
Okay, let's see here. We do have Arnold Sacks. And come on up, Mr. Sacks, and then Mr. Constituent, H.
It looks like you lost a quorum there, Mr. Sacks.
Good day, sir. Please speak to the item.
It looks like you lost a quorum here.
Please speak to the item, sir.
I am beginning, but it looks like you lost a quorum, sir.
Please speak to the item.
Oh, no, there's number 10. $10,000, Council District 13, or any, for Bureau of Street Service to prepare and execute necessary documents and payments to Hollywood Beautification Team or any other agency or organization as appropriate. What does that mean exactly? Any other agency or as appropriate? Is it for the Hollywood Beautification Team to do this work? Because it says conduct the maintenance, or is that just a pass-through for them to get the money to pay somebody else? I know it's just a piddly little amount here, but imagine if it was $100,000 or $1 million or something along that effect. Any other organization or agency? That's the way... That's the way to do City Council...
Thank you very much. Our next, yes?
For the record, I'd like to reflect that there are at least 10 members in this room, and some may be in the restroom. We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Councilman Zine. Our next speaker, Mr. Constituent H.
For the record, Mr. Arnold Sax is right. There is a quorum. He's right. And his comments, he's absolutely right. We should question certain amounts of appropriate or inappropriate funds, but the gentleman that was here earlier, just off-topic for just a slight moment, was Donald Arthur Cronos. He's an actor. Yes, he raised his voice a little too loud, but again, let's not be so dogmatic.
Mr. President, he's now talking about item 25.
May I proceed, Mr. Attorney? Thank you, as you shake your head. So, yes, an appropriate $10,000 for maintenance. I know that I've requested my councilman to provide a maintenance in our area, and so, Mr. Garcetti and Labange, I'm glad you're doing something very positive in this matter, that you're using this beautification funds to support your area and to increase the popularity of what beautification is. And so, thank you, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Garcetti, when you get back. So again, let's make sure that we take the initiative to use these fundings appropriately, specifically for these types of allocations when it comes to furniture revenue, because I know in Council District 14, there's been a little questioning about that, and I hope, again, as Mr. Zuma Dog for mayor will say, I got the FBI investigating it. Thank you.
Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it's my understanding you need to make an announcement where it relates to item 30.
Yes, Mr. President. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and begin the special meeting?
Yes.
Call the roll. Alaco and Busciano, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Coretts, Corrigan, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Weston, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. At the request of the Chair of Arts and Parks, we will continue this item until Wednesday, tomorrow.
And for the record, the council file number for item 30 should be 12-0605.
Thank you for that. Is there any more business before this council?
Do you wish to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular, Mr. President?
Oh, yes, I do. We adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting, and I guess what items are next?
Council has motions for posted and referral.
They're posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Corrigan requests to be excused on May 15. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on May 16 and 23, and Councilmember Perry requests to arrive at 11:00 a.m. on May 22.
Okay, without objection?
That clears the desk.
Okay, members' announcements? Well, I'll do a quick announcement. I had a discussion with Mr. Coretts not too long ago, and what Mr. Coretts said, what we need where it relates to dealing with our budget concerns, he said we need 102 million-dollar ideas. So I'm asking all members if you have any suggestion that would cut our cost, to please get it to Mr. Corrigan and the CAO's office so that it can be vetted. There's no request that is an unintelligent request. Any idea that you have, please, please give that information to the Chair of Budget and Finance and the CAO's office. I know I asked the question, how much would we save if we had an LED light in every light socket in the city of Los Angeles? And a couple of other things. So if you have any ideas, please forward that to Chair Budget. Mr. Labange for an announcement.
Just five years ago, 1,200 acres, Burton Griffith Park, the park has come back tremendously. Want to thank the Park Department staff, hundreds of volunteers, and on the day of the fire, especially want to thank our public safety, police, fire, LA County, cities from around, Los Angeles, Park Rangers, GSD officers, as well as LAPD. It does come back.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Cardenas.
... because of the great new water lines that they put into the park.
Thank you.
Thank you, DWP.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Speaking of city services, my son was surprised and pleased that when he went to the Observatory, that belongs to the people of Los Angeles, he met a couple of his friends from college there, and they were doing an art project, and one of the things that came out of his mouth, he says, "We had fun, and it was free." I said, "Great." So I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind all Angelinos and beyond that the Observatory is a wonderful, beautiful, incredible place, known worldwide, and it belongs to us, the people of Los Angeles, and you should utilize that in many, many services that are for free in the city of Los Angeles. But also, it's important for us to understand that over a million dogs and cats are turned into shelters throughout California, and only half of them make it out alive. The rest are killed at the hands of, unfortunately, local government like ours. We do our part, unfortunately, because we are over capacity and we can't save all of them. But the best way for us to reduce that number and to become a no-kill city, a no-kill California, is that if people will buy the California Pet Lovers license plate, every year when you pay that fee, $40 goes to spay and neutering. And I'm trying to make this announcement once a week, because we have the right to buy that license plate, but it's not in production yet. As of last week, when the governor announced and said that he is signing a bill to extend our opportunity to buy these license plates, he promised that, and he actually has signed it since then, and Pierce Brosnan, who actually did the artwork on the license plate, and my friend Caesar Milan, the Dog Whisperer, he was there as well to announce how important it is that if we want to save lives, the best thing for us to do is buy that license plate. And I want to announce, like I am every week, that 4,995 license plates have been purchased, but we're short 2,505. In order for those license plates to be produced and that fee to be collected and put into spay and neuter programs throughout the state, we have to get to 7,500 license plates before they will print the first one. So we're still short 2,505 license plates, and we just got extended one more year to buy them. But let's not wait, let's buy those license plates now. So Angelinos, please, please, buy a Pet Lovers license plate, and every year, $40 will go to spay and neutering so that we can save dogs and cats' lives. Remember, over 500,000 dogs and cats, little kittens and puppies are killed every year because they don't have a home. The best way to handle that is spay and neuter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
I just want to take a moment to welcome the new Dodger owners. They basically acquired control last week. Mr. Stan Caston, Mr. Mark Walter, Mr. Urban Johnson, otherwise known as Magic. They are now the new owners of the Division Leader's Dodgers, and so we look forward to a great relationship with the city, and I look forward to bringing them in for the 50th anniversary when time allows. But again, we'll say congratulations formally from the council.
Joey B.
Yes, it is a new day with the Los Angeles Dodgers. So exciting to move forward. I just want to announce, the love of my life, my best friend, my wife's birthday is today, and it's her first birthday as a councilman, so I want to stand and, as a First Lady of the 15th District, I want to wish her a happy birthday. We love you. And also, how about them Kings, huh? How about the Los Angeles Kings, off to the Western Conference Finals? We wish them the best to bring that Stanley Cup to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Buscaino, you could have thanked the Kings tomorrow and kept this day just in honor of your wife. Any more, who is the queen of the 15th District? Any more announcements? Mr. Englander.
Just wanted to recognize our colleague, Councilman Reyes, and welcome him back. He was out under the weather, and he were missed, and we're happy you're back, so.
Well, I want to welcome Ed back as well. It's good to have you back. And he and I were not out together, we didn't get hurt together. He wasn't there when I fell down the steps. Mr. Cardenas.
Not to be outdone, my wife's birthday is tomorrow, so happy birthday.
Smart man.
Being a veteran of the council, I am excused tomorrow on my wife's birthday. And I just want to say happy birthday, Norma, and she's somewhere in her 20s, I think, so, something like that.
I think 25.
I want to say happy birthday, Norma, and thanks for putting me on the spot. Joe.
Well, I want to say happy birthday. My wife's birthday is in September, so in case I forget. Anyway, any more announcements? Any more announcements than adjourning motions, members? Mr. England, oh, would everybody please rise in the council chambers? Mr. Englander.
It is sad that I, having this adjourning motion for John Piddon. Like to adjourn today in his memory of John, a 40-year-old resident of Granada Hills, who tragically lost his life in a motorcycle accident in Valley Glen on Friday, May 4, 2012. Lifelong resident of San Fernando Valley, he graduated from my alma mater, El Camino High School. John was a veteran lighting technician and member of the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees. He worked on hundreds of films, TV shows, theatrical productions, concerts, festivals, and events, where he brought skill and love to his craft and the arts to everything that he worked on. He helped countless people to find jobs and work in his industry, and was instrumental in making many great projects happen that brought joy to our community. He was also an artist, skydiver, motorcycle rider, scuba diver, stilt walker, and a clown. He is survived by two brothers and his sister, a huge community of friends and coworkers who will always remember him fondly and miss him greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Coretts, did you have an adjourning motion?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Adam MCA Yock. When you think of trailblazing, ultra-cool rap artists, the image of three wild and irreverent Jewish kids isn't the first image that comes to mind. This last week, one-third of the trailblazing, ultra-cool, and Jewish rap group, The Beastie Boys, passed away. Adam MCA Yock died in New York after a three-year battle with cancer. Adam was raised by a Catholic father and a Jewish mother, and in fact, had a mostly nonreligious upbringing, but it didn't matter. The Jews and the rest of the world would claim him as one of their own. We did so because Adam and the rest of The Beastie Boys brought what would become the rap revolution to the suburban fringes of America. With songs such as "Fight For Your Right To Party" and "No Sleep Till Brooklyn," kids from the middle of nowhere got a flavor of what it was like to live the life of a rebellious New Yorker during the late 1980s. Adam, along with Mike D. Diamond and Adam Adrock Horovitz, served as our primary examples of coolness, creativity, and irreverence while still maintaining an uncompromised Jewish flavor and spirit. The Beastie Boys could have easily become a gimmicky band and lost in the plastic bin of MTA 1980s relics, but there was more to them than that. They had an immeasurable impact on music videos, early record sampling, trend-setting fashion and musicianship. All three were well-accomplished musicians who played their own instruments on all of their records. Over the course of their career, The Beasties, led by Adam, transformed themselves from bratty, rebellious Jewish kids out to destroy suburbia to the elder statesmen of hip-hop. Adam in particular created a template for how to evolve, not just as an artist but as a human being. He became a practicing Buddhist and put words into action and replaced his lyrics that were previously immature, brash, homophobic, or misogynist with more uplifting, progressive, and thought-provoking ideas. After 9/11, Adam and The Beastie Boys organized New Yorkers Against Violence, a concert benefit for some of the victims least likely to receive help from elsewhere. Adam leaves a long legacy, not just as a musician, but as a producer, director, artist, humanitarian, husband, and loving father. Passing away at only 47 years old, Adam leaves behind his wife, Dutch and Wang Do, their daughter, Tenzin Lozelle, and millions of fans worldwide, and he'll be missed by all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Labange.
Maurice Sendak, 83 years old, considered in the 20th century the most prolific children's artist, just passed today. He was a wonderful man. We did name a Los Angeles Unified School District in North Hollywood, right near the In-N-Out off of Langisham, Maurice Sendak School, which has a great staff. He survived, excuse me, his partner of 50 years previously died, preceded him in death, Eugene Gwynn. I ask we adjourn in memory of the great artist Maurice Sendak, who was inspired by his brother to write and draw.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael V. Malouf Jr., Mr. Labange, I'm sure you want to join this, Christie Malouf's dad, a friend of ours from many, many years past, through April 25. Michael Bedar Malouf Jr. was born in his residence in Los Angeles, July 10, 1925, to Nazira, and Michael Sr. graduated from Thomas Star King Junior High School, then John Marshall High School, in 1943. After graduation, he was drafted to the United States Army, where he served as a machine-gun instructor. Mike married the love of his life, Frida, October 12, 1952. Together, they raised three children, Darryl, Karen, and Christie. Mike later attended Engineering School, became a member of the Motion Picture and Television Engineers, started his television career at Golden West Broadcasters, KTLA-TV5, where he spent more than 40 years as technical director. At the time of his retirement from KTLA, he was manager of technical facilities. He worked on numerous shows over the years, including The Dyna Shore Show, The Dyna Shore Golf Classic, Solid Gold, Shaun Anna, The Donnie Marie Show, KTLA Morning and Evening News, Hollywood Santa Parade, and the New Year's Day Tournament of Roses Parade. In addition, he also played a significant role in disseminating the video feed to all the stations from the Ambassador Hotel after the assassination of Senator Robert F. Kennedy on June 5, 1968. Mike's dedication, quality of work earned him honors in from the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences for outstanding individual achievement in the area of creative technical crafts by the Television Academy Arts, and his contribution to the Emmy Awards winning KTLA Morning News in 1992. Upon retirement from KTLA Tribune Company in January 1993, Mike kept an active civic life affiliated with several organizations, including Arabic Masonic Lodge Number 763, Sons of the Desert Shriners Club, St. Nicholas Parish Council, as well as the Order of St. Ignatius of Antioch, honored many times for his accomplishments and efforts in each of these organizations. Mike and Frida celebrated 50 years of marriage in 2002. They celebrated the milestone by renewing their vows on a cruise to Mexico. Mike was a gentle, loving, and caring man. Beloved husband, father, uncle, and godfather, his family in his life was blessed with love, happiness, and productivity. He will miss by all. May he rest in peace. He is survived by his wife of 60 years, Frida, his sons, Darryl, his daughters, Christie, Karen, and his son-in-law, Brian. And when I, my former married life, Mike was an uncle to many of my relatives, and I remember the Hollywood Christmas Parade, working at as a policeman, and Mike ran the whole show on behalf of KTLA, and he's just a wonderful, wonderful man, and passed away, and it was a sad, sad loss, and a wonderful, productive man, a good family man. His daughter, Christie, is a representative, a civilian employee of the LAPD for over 30 years, so Mike Malouf, may he rest in peace.
Mr. Labange. Okay. Yes.
Mr. President, I just want to welcome one of my mentors at LAPD, Lieutenant Chris Kenny, who gave me my P3 stripes. We're having lunch right now, she's welcoming to the John Ferraro Building, John Ferraro Chambers. Thank you, Lieutenant Kenny. Here she is, there she is.
Thank you.
You gave me your stripes, you believed in me.
Thank you, Lieutenant. No more, seeing no more adjourning motions. Madam Clerk, this council meeting is adjourned.